Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order Provincial School District 8 Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, November 15, 2021. I don't know if this can last.
I can pick up for you. Do you need me to take over?
Starting.
Sure. Okay, why don't we start with the roll call? Next to me is Kathleen Goodwin. I'll let her say her voice and ask you to give a wave. Mary, why don't you start with you?
Mary Kucheski, Marlboro.
Jean Wilson, Marlboro.
Rob Shattle from Hebron.
Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent.
Eva Gall, Business Manager.
Eric Schachter, Mandelbacher.
Rob Ackland, Hebron. And we'll go online. Joe? Joe, I think you're muted. Eric, are you muted? Let's try Mike Morris. Yep. We're not hearing you. It looks like your, your voice should be picked up, but so we're going to have to work on that technical glitch. Sue? Can we fix that? We're working on the sound. Hold on one sec.
So you're going to leave the president in a combat.
Okay. They all just did it. Okay, let's try roll call again for those of you online. Joe?
Joe O'Connor, Hebron.
Perfect. Mike?
Mike Morris from Hebron.
Great. Sue?
Sue Stoltenberg from Marlboro.
Jessica?
Jessica Dax, Hebron.
Lauren?
Lori Blank, Andover.
Great, thank you. Any other board members online? And I know we have a couple of administrators. Christine?
Christine Harburg, Guard of People Services.
Annie, I think I saw you.
Annie Brusdale, High School Principal.
Thank you. Any other administrators online?
Christine Small, Supervisor of People Services.
And in person?
Michael Ceruzi, Middle School Principal.
Great. Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. You have the flag of the United States of America. One nation, one God. Is there any requests to add or delete agenda? I'm sorry. I'll read the, I'll read the, the notice of public comments for Kathleen. Hebron, Andover, Marlboro, Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Ed Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? Raise your hand. Okay. Move on to the next agenda item. Are there any board members who would like to add or delete an agenda item? Okay. We'll move on to student reports. Lily?
Um, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. Homecoming was about a couple of weeks ago, I think, two weeks ago now, and it was supposed to be outside, but it came inside. And I'm actually, I think everyone's really happy about that. Outside would have been chilly and inside, everyone, like, there was a ton of space. We had the atrium, cafeteria, and the oxygen. And people were able to, like, spread out and have a lot more fun, I think, inside. Fall sports are pretty much over now, except for cheer and football. I think they go until Thanksgiving. Liam Calhoun, however, disgraced in Vermont. He broke a 30-year-old school record for the cross-country record that I don't know is, I don't know, broken. And he was the first student 25 years who was a state open, which is held in February on Saturday, when high schools are there. And then for seniors, people who applied for early action, which is typically November 1st, but it could also be November 15th, are starting to find out where they got into college. So that's pretty exciting. Also, I regret, but, I guess it sort of comes with territory. And then quarter one just ended, so that means seniors are sort of halfway through the air. Because after semester one closes out, for those of you who don't know, our class ranks and our GPAs are super high in the last, but not least volleyball are moving up to the semifinals. We beat South Windsor in the quarterfinals on Saturday, it was really the game, and now they're playing some team in New Britain on Wednesday. So.
Lily, can I have a little tribute to your comments?
Sure.
So Liam Calhoun back did break a 30-year-old, year-old record in cross-country, and the coach for Michael Giudinis, who had the record 30 years ago, was Mark Logan. Mark Logan is still coaching the team and coached Liam. I, I don't anticipate it's going to take another 30 years for a Ram student to break that record, nor do I expect Mr. Logan to still be with us, coaching 30 years from now, but nonetheless. Quiet, quiet, Ron. Ron?
Okay, so, well, I just want to talk about something that basically stems from one of my wellness classes. It's called a nutrition wellness class at high school. So we did a project where we could, like, propose new classes and, like, basically get feed, get feedback on them and discuss what classes would be good at the high school and what classes we would like to, like, potentially bring back. And there's a lot of, there were a lot of presentations about Consumer Science class, and there was a lot of interest in potentially bringing that back. And I think that, that's something that can potentially, students could, like, provide their, keep up, obviously, develop their skills with company and stuff, and that, and I feel that's a useful class to be brought back. And another class that could potentially be introduced, that we have interest in introducing, is a driving course or driving classes, because it's common for people who go to, like, Lawsonberry now these days to go out, take those driving courses. And I feel like if Hebron had an option through some, like, those programs helping with driving, it would, it can prove beneficial to this.
Great. Thanks.
I'm going to be trapped with this.
I think I can't do the next one, so.
I know. I'll try, as long as you don't make fun of me. I had to do announcements at my school this way today, which is very interesting. So, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to have some closing remarks, because this is my last Board of Education meeting, and I regret, you know, leaving the board, but it's for the right reasons. I have two kids at home. I've got to take care of that part. But I just want to overall just thank, first of all, the administration and the staff, and of course, the people who sit and give up time, you know, for the Board of Education and every month. I've enjoyed being a member of the Ram Board of Education. It was a privilege to be elected, to volunteer, and to support the student, staff, and administration of this school district. A great deal has occurred over the past four years. It'd be hard to say that COVID was not truly a test of all of our perseverance and certainly created new challenges for all of us. As an educator, I empathize. Our students have been impacted by the lack of consistent educational opportunities and activities, like proms and sporting events that make high school memorable, not to mention the toll the pandemic has taken on some students' overall well-being and mental health. I hope that the faculty of Ram continue to be flexible and committed in their support for students as they recover from this. Certainly, our focus is student, is our student community, but also to the staff that are returning to a classroom. Despite best efforts to continue on, I am sure that some staff have their own personal struggles as they return to the hallways of Ram Middle and High School. I want you to know, I sincerely have appreciated your efforts on behalf of our young learners. Your endurance and willingness to put your own needs aside for our students does not go unnoticed. I'd like to congratulate the current Board of Education members for being supportive, for respectfully disagreeing when you felt it necessary, and for your service to our Ram community. The Facility Subcommittee was very active with new windows, the DOT project, and the changes made to the parking lot, upgrades that met ADA compliance, and of course, the turf project. I'm disappointed that the vote did not support this project, and the Board of Education will now have to deal with ways to fix this issue in the future. And Joe O'Connor, I know that hits a personal note for you especially. For negotiations, I hope that we did our best to show support to our staff who well-thought-out contracts. The Board of Education also reviewed and updated new policies, worked with the Business Department to provide a transparent budget process, and most importantly, discussed and supported curriculum changes and resources for our students. These discussions were my favorite part of being a Board of Education member. There are still things left to do, such as hiring a new separate superintendent to be the successor, Mr. Leslie. These are big shoes to fill for sure. Mr. Leslie has done a remarkable job as superintendent. He has made it easy for me to be the Board of Education Chair, and I appreciate his guidance. The Board will also have to fix and revise strategic plan and discuss what actions need to be taken to fix the athletic field, maybe hopefully adding lights, bleachers, and even a press or announcer's box. For our new members, congratulations. You've been elected to be part of a great school community. Your leadership matters. Please remember that each person brings something to the table. As I have learned, the position of Board Chair is important. Having an open mind, remembering that there are experts within the school, and being a good listener with good questions is the only weak way to keep the school district moving forward. Leadership has very little to do with longevity. It is about purpose. If you are here for the students and staff of the school, then your heart is in the right place. Never forget, it is about them. It is not about you and whatever platform you ran on. Be kind and continue to provide the best you can for our students and staff. Thank you for the amazing privilege I have been given. Best of luck to all of you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Well, and my remarks are going to pick up, I think, where Kathleen left off, in that we do have four board members who will be leaving us this evening. So I'd like to focus my remarks this month on that. First of all, I'd like to express what a pleasure it has been working with each of the four Ram Board of Education members we are honoring tonight. Each of the four board members I will be speaking for have done a remarkable job of supporting our students, families, teachers, and staff members, and have each made significant contributions to Ram. On behalf of the entire Ram community, it is my honor to thank Rob Shattle, Jean Wilson, Kathleen Goodwin, and Joe O'Connor for the years of service to the Ram community. Volunteering your time and energy in the best of times and doing it well can be a significant challenge. Volunteering your service and devoting countless hours of time during a pandemic and doing it well is nothing short of remarkable. Each of these board members rose to the occasion and did not skip a beat in ensuring that Ram students, our families, and our teachers and staff members have the resources necessary to continue schooling during the pandemic and to then stage a successful return to in-person learning at the beginning of the school year. So, Rob Shattle. Rob, thank you for your focus on common sense solutions and your commitment to speaking up when you saw a problem to be solved. Rob brought a significant amount of expertise in facilities maintenance and made significant contributions to the district's capital programs, the DOT project, and our many field projects. Rob's commitment to common sense, practical solutions, to difficult problems has served our students well while providing tremendous value to each member of our community. The entire Shattle family has a long and stellar history at Ram, and Rob, he did them all proud.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Congratulations, Rob.
I'd like to say that I was delivering a gold bullion from the district's halls, but they really are quite lovely plaques, so. Jean? An effective Board of Education needs to look at all sides of an issue before making decisions that impact so many people within our communities. Jean, your thoughtful questions helped to guide the Board to the very challenging issues we have grappled with over the last few years. Your encouragement to look at all sides of each issue helped us all make the best possible decisions during your tenure on the Board. Your unwavering support for ensuring all students receive the best possible education contributed to the success of each of these students.
Congratulations, Jean.
Kathleen Goodwin. As superintendent, working well with each Board of Education member is critical to the success of our students and our schools. I feel blessed to have had the opportunity to work so closely and so well with Kathleen over this past year to help guide Ram and our community through some incredibly challenging times. Our return to in-person learning has certainly been challenging, but working closely with the Board under Kathleen's leadership has allowed us to navigate successfully through the challenges of this past year. Kathleen's deep knowledge and expertise in the field of education made sure that we always put our students front and center with each decision. Thank you, Kathleen. Joe O'Connor. Joe began his service to the Ram Board in 2013. Over the course of his years on the Board, Joe has had a profound impact on Ram. Joe represents the classic tale of a citizen who sees a problem and then successfully commits himself to fixing it. When Joe was first elected to the Board, the district had fallen short of fully supporting the maintenance needs of our buildings and the fields we ask our athletes to practice and compete on. Joe championed the development and maintenance of the district's capital budget. I wish I could show you all pictures of our campus prior to Joe's tenure on the Board compared to the amazing and beautifully maintained facility we all currently enjoy. Joe's emphasis on ensuring that Ram has the funding, the resources, and personnel necessary to adequately maintain and repair our facility has benefited every student, teacher, coach, staff member, and family at Ram. But please don't think that Joe is just about facilities. Throughout his tenure on the Board, Joe has also been a tireless advocate for ensuring our students have the learning resources they need and that our teachers have the supplies and tools necessary to ensure the success of all of our students. Joe, on behalf of the entire community, thank you for your service.
Congratulations to all the other members. Thank you for your service.
I, I know how proud Joe is of his contribution, and I know how much he likes to take a drive-through Ram to admire the condition. So the next drive-through, Joe, you owe me a stop by the office, and I'll be happy to be with you in person.
I apologize for not being here tonight, but I will do that. Thank you, Scott.
Board seat. Case.
Approval of minutes from October 18, 2021. Approve of 8.1.
We have a motion for the approval of the minutes from October 18, 2021.
So moved. Sue Stoltenberg.
Thank you, Sue. Second?
This is Jessica the second.
Okay. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor? We'll go down, starting with Mary.
I have to abstain if I have a question.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
And I think they're several, correct? Okay, so the minutes passed. The, um, next agenda item, I'm very proud and happy to announce, but also very sad to announce, that we have a resignation letter from Sam Chau, who many of you have heard over the last few years, or expand, expand upon our wonderful CTE program, our Career and Technical Education Program, that Sam has done so much to make vital and to provide students with a constant and changing opportunity to gain additional career and college experiences. Most notably, Sam has done a remarkable job of putting Ram front and center in the movement to provide at-school training through our manufacturing program and providing an opportunity for our seniors to get training here at Ram while still a student and put them in a wonderful position to leave Ram with a career offer from some of the most prestigious manufacturers in the state, including local manufacturers to the large manufacturers like Pratt &amp; Whitney and Electric Boat. Sam, the, the work that Sam has completed is nothing short of spectacular. But unfortunate for us, that work doesn't go unnoticed. And so Sam, I don't think is necessarily leaving Ram, but she is entering a new phase of her career and will be working in a very well-deserved position at Pratt &amp; Whitney, where I'm sure she will do an absolutely spectacular job. So we look forward to a continued connection and work with Sam as she represents Pratt and we continue to train and send kids in your direction. So, the recommendation is that the Board accepts Ram's letter of presentation. And I have a motion.
Will she regret?
Thank you, Kathleen. Second?
I'll second that.
Mike Morris?
Seconded by Joe. With, with regret.
Yes. Any discussion? So I think in person, we can, you know, all those in favor, if you raise your hand if you're in person. Okay, and Mike?
Just for the record, what if we say no?
Then I've got to deal with the guy sitting two chairs down from the after the meeting, I'm afraid.
He's gone anyway.
No, you live, Morris. So is that a no, Mike, or?
No, then yes, and thank you.
Lori?
Yes, and, and thank you, and best of luck.
Jessica?
Yes, and Sammy will absolutely be missed. You opened the doors for so many students and really changed their future, so you've, you've done amazing work there.
Sue?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes, and to echo everybody else, Sam, you know, spent a great career at Ram. You've done so much that people who don't know, the grants you wrote and the monies that you brought into Ram were phenomenal, so you will be sorely missed, but good luck in your future endeavors at Pratt. Thank you for your service.
Okay, we have no old business to cover this evening. We'll go to new business, discussion on, and action on contracting with a new organization to facilitate the hiring of a new superintendent. So I had to inform the Board sadly a few weeks ago that, well, let me take a step back just to give everyone the history. When Ram embarked on the journey to hire a new superintendent back in 2020, we interviewed three firms that assist boards in the search for a new superintendent, and the Board chose Joe Arardi to lead that search. And Joe, if they remember, he started the process. He reached out to different constituents of the community and did some surveying to identify the characteristics that the community was most interested in. And it was decided at some point that I would remain on for another year, and Joe would put the process on hold and then pick it up again right around this time of this year. Joe met with the Board in September to lay out the timeframe. The timeframe was that the position would be advertised on December 1st with interviews in January and the hope for a appointment in February for a July 1st start. Most superintendents need to give at least 90 days' notice so that the timing, that time will bring them up. Sad to say that Joe has since learned that he's facing some serious health issues and has had to pull out of all of his professional obligations. When Joe notified me of that, he suggested that the work be picked up by another firm led by Chip Demay, who Joe works closely with. Chip is the executive director of one of the RES in the lower western portion of the state. Chip was actually one of the candidates that interviewed for the position back in 2020. So the Board has a decision to make, and there's, there's basically two ways to go on this, I think. And there are benefits and pitfalls to each decision. One would be to allow me to enter a contract with Chip and pick up, he would pick up where Joe left off. But there's, you know, the benefits of that is that the process would proceed in the same timeline. Chip comes recommended by Joe. He's actually picking up Joe's courses at Central Connecticut State University as well, so Joe has a lot of trust in Chip's work. Certainly, the downside of that is back in 2020, the Board didn't choose Chip at the time. And in, in some ways, the Board loses the opportunity to, you know, be fully engaged in that decision-making process of who is going to lead that search. So there's, there's a downside to that. The other option would be to start the process anew and go out and, you know, open up the, the process for proposals and start that process again of choosing somebody else to pick up. The benefit there is that the Board has full control, and you'll have an opportunity to see who's interested and, and make sure that that choice, your first choice, is the Board's choice. The downside on that is that you would, you'd lose a lot of time on that, and then, you know, probably put us back far enough where we wouldn't have a new permanent superintendent at the beginning of the next school year. I think there's also a challenge, is that we may lose some of the best candidates who tend to be out there now. I mean, that was when most districts are advertising. So, so the Board has a different decision to make. Move forward with Chip. Again, someone who's a colleague of Joe's and I think would, would be able to pick up where Joe left off. Again, though, there is that option. I don't want to, I want to make sure that everyone does fully understand that there is another option, and that would be to start the process again. We'll open the floor to discussions. We'll open the floor to discussions.
I have a question or comment. So, um, one of Joe's huge selling points to me was he was only taking on us and possibly another, um, another board. Do we know what Chip's current workload is?
So I don't know that answer. And I don't know if he references that in the materials that I shared with you earlier today. I know I updated the materials. I, I'm not sure if he, if that's on that.
So Mike, Mike, and with my next statement, I, for the life of me, I remember, I think it was our first meeting back in the school and we were all in my house and we interviewed the candidates at that point. I, I can't put my, can't put a name, a face to the name, unfortunately. I would love to meet with him. You know, I don't know how quickly we can meet, have him answer some, I, I have, you know, some questions. I'd like to hear his spiel again. I don't know if we can do that somewhat quickly and then determine if we are comfortable and just choose to hire him or if we need to, you know, do a further search. But that's my thoughts on this.
And Sue, I know that Chip is available tomorrow evening. At seven, well, seven o'clock.
Yeah, that's on, I, that's on my calendar. I think it's on all of our calendars, right? Yes.
And I, I, I scheduled that, um, just because I, I wanted, you know, the, the time crunch we're working on is that if the board does decide to move forward and stay to the same timeframe, one of the new Connecticut laws is that when you post a position, you need to at least have a salary available to candidates should they ask. So, you know, that means that a meeting has to take place with the board and whoever is facilitating that process before December 1st, which is obviously coming up quickly. So, um, I scheduled that meeting for that purpose if in fact we move forward with Chip this evening. I think the, the challenge of, of, of using that as another opportunity to interview Chip is that we haven't posted that meeting because it, it would be a non-meeting if it's just to talk about superintendent salary. But if it was to kind of re-interview, then we'd have to post as a regular meeting. So we wouldn't be able.
Special.
Yeah, we'd have to, um, it has to be posted 24 hours in advance. So I, I have to find other avail, you know, and I reached out to Chip and asked him what his availability was. Tomorrow night was the date that he'd given me. So I can certainly reach out to him and ask him if he has other dates available. Lori?
Thank you. As I'm looking at his letter and remembering from the interview, and Sue, I don't know if this helps, but he was a very dynamic, kind of larger-than-life individual. He moved around a lot. He, he had a strong voice. He connected. He seemed like an extreme extrovert. So I don't know if that helps jog your memory at all, but.
It, it does. It does. I, I, I remember that. Yes, now I do and I, I, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, and I agree that what was nice about Joe was that he seemed to be grassroots almost, you know, and had lots of connections and, um, he, we would be his main focus. When, as I'm reading Chip's letter, it does say that this search would be led by a team of individuals as CES. So, um, I don't know if that helps, helps you or anyone who's thinking about moving ahead. You know, if you, if you like the fact that there would be people available to us probably at any point in time, but they may not be the same individual all the time. You know, so Chip may not be available, but someone in his team certainly sounds like will be available consistently throughout this project. So I don't know if that helps as you think about it. I, um, I think that, in my opinion, I thought he, he was also very well-prepared. I think it speaks a lot if he, Scott, you said he's taking over Joe's coursework at CCSU. Right? And, and they seem to run in similar circles. And, and they did both talk about the story interviewing, um, and which I, I really liked and thought was really an excellent option for the interview process. So I, I personally just want to put out there that I would feel comfortable working with Chip and what I would be concerned about is getting ourselves in a time crunch on board of trying to re-interview or have other folks and then, as Scott indicated, potentially missing out on hiring the right person and the best person in time for the new school year. I did have a question, though, Scott, because I, I apologize. I did not get a chance to look up Joe's information before the meeting. Just looking at the cost proposal, do you know if there's a significant difference between, um, not the option one for the traditional interviews, but Chip's option two for the guided storytelling versus Joe's proposal package?
So Chip, Chip has agreed to, um, basically take over the process at the same cost, that the same amount of, of funding that's left to pay for Joe. I think Joe had contracted for about $10,000 and we already had paid him about $3,500 for the, his first, um, year of service. Chip has agreed to pick up and kind of finish where Joe had, had left off at the same cost that Joe was going to be charging us. Short of any other, you know, incidentals that we couldn't predict, but it would, it would essentially be the same, you know. It would be a discount.
Okay. Okay, okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
I'm wondering, Scott, too, one of the reasons that we like Joe is the personal effect that we think Lori is alluding to. Is it because CES is a group, is it possible to ask him? If it's not going to be him, whom I would be on that team, so the Board of Education has the opportunity to talk directly to just that one person, weren't known, it's going to be multiple people because they're taking over as if it wasn't something I was planning. You know, I'm sure they'll make their best effort, but it would be helpful. And I think they would prefer, well, we're not going to be here, but I'll be watching. Preferred. I, I liked Joe's grassroots style as well, too, Lori, and I think the personalization that we're getting from one person as opposed to a, as opposed to a company or a RES.
Yeah, I, I think that's definitely key. And another part is how, how many schools are they working with? You know, so whatever team they say that will be assigned to us, how many searches are they, they doing?
Are there any other questions for Scott regarding superintendents?
Kathleen, this is Joe. Is there a third option available to us?
There, there really isn't, Joe, because we need somebody to facilitate the process and be, because we haven't interviewed anyone else or haven't had a chance to do that. Like, there's, there's not another, like, third party that I could pull in. I mean, there, I, I guess there would be. You know, we, I could go to Cave and say, hey, would you guys, but I think you're going to have the same questions that you would about Chip in that you, we don't know those folks and it would be, you know, similar to what we're doing with Chip and hiring an organization that we haven't had any interaction with. Whereas Chip, at least I know some members of the board have met him in his, when he did his presentation.
Have the applicants, since we postponed, so, because we postponed it, um, is, is there, is there applicants in the pool right now? Is that my understanding?
There are some applicants that were interested in 2020 and that are still interested. I can share that I actually received a phone call from one today asking for the status of our search. And most specifically because there's an opening close by in one of our neighboring districts. And their, their question is, I'd love to hold out for Ram, but not knowing when and if the position will be open. I know that there's an opening nearby and, you know, so he, he wanted, they wanted to know, should I put all my eggs into that basket or, you know, should, is Ram still an option for me? That's just one person. But, you know, I, I would venture to guess that this is a very attractive position and that, um, those that were interested in 2020 may very well still be interested in. But I think there'd also be a, a new group of folks that weren't looking then that are now that would also be very interested.
I think it goes with ways because I knew people that were interested when we first put it out and I have some colleagues that called the, and, um, a couple of them have already moved on and gotten other jobs. And that would be the case no matter what. I mean, it's just the kind of the timing of it. And I think there's some really good candidates out there and they're going to apply and apply in some other districts no matter what. Um, it's just really a, a, a timing issue for the board at this point, um, you know, if you want to move forward or if you want to consider other options for the process. The other thing is, Scott, it is elongated for whatever reason, your time, no matter what. So would you inter?
Correct.
Yes. So that would be another.
I'm sorry, I agree to turn that way, then here.
I'm sorry. Now, unfortunately, Scott is retiring. So if the board delays, um, for good reasons, I would, you know, I suspect you're not doing anything else, but no matter whatever, the delay is, Mr. Luskey is retiring, so when he leaves and if there is no potential replacement at that point, the district would then have an interim and then would have another transition. I'm sure the board is like that.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely not saying let's delay anything. I, I agree with the timeline and I, I, the urgency behind this. I just would love to just hear, you know, the question of what's the team working on? You know, i- is it going to be the same consistent team or who is it, we're going to be working directly with? There's still some questions that I think we need. I would like answers.
So Sue, right, you're saying that you would, oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen?
No, Lori.
Okay. Um, Sue, are you saying that you would like those answers before we finalize and move forward with Chip or just?
Uh, yeah, oh, yes.
You would recommend moving forward, but that's like an introductory, let's have that meeting and, and find out those answers ASAP. Which one are you suggesting?
I guess I would like to know the answers to the questions first, but of course, majority rules, so, uh, you know, it is what it is, but that's my opinion on that.
Scott, what do we have to do tonight? What is the charge with this? Do we have to make a decision about moving forward with Chip and vote on that or?
We, we do need to make a deci, we need to make a decision tonight. So if the decision is, I think you can entertain a motion to move forward with Chip. And if in fact you do that, I think I would, I would ask the board to hold the non-meeting tomorrow to discuss the salary, setting the salary, so we're set to go first thing. If you would rather hold off on making the final decision tonight and, and have an opportunity to meet with Chip, then what I would need to do is, you know, reach out to Chip this evening to see what his availability would be between now and, um, well, now and I would say Thanksgiving. And we would, you know, giving me enough time to be able to notice a meeting, post a meeting, so we could, um, have a meeting with Chip. And you get, you know, we can ask the questions and, um, move forward. And then, you know, I, I, I still think we could still, you could do that and still.
Have the meeting tomorrow.
Make it early, so I don't think you can do tomorrow, Sue, just because I can't post the meeting 24 hours in advance.
No, I mean, the meeting that's on the books for tomorrow, but no, we could still proceed ahead with that meeting to set the salary, correct?
Well, my concern there is if I'm not able to tell Chip we're, we're, we're moving forward with his services, he may be reluctant to meet with the board to review, you know, you know what I'm saying? He, he may feel, you haven't contracted with me yet, so I'm reluctant to begin the work.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, because I was, you know, doing online education during COVID and that took me a month in the evening meetings, I was not there, so I can't weigh in. I really feel safe weighing in on any of these people. But the timeline does sound like a compelling, I, I would hope that we didn't start July 1st without a superintendent in place. That, that sounds like a pretty high risk factor to me.
But if we did try to schedule a meeting with Chip from now until Thanksgiving, we can, and ask the questions, have him meet with us, ask the questions, we can still meet the timeline, correct?
I think so, Sue, absolutely. Because I think we would, um, you know, I think as long as, as the board members are willing to be flexible enough to meet when he's available. So, you know, it could be an eight o'clock meeting, you know, it might be something out of the, out of the, the range of our typical time. And then, um, you know, we would just need to make sure that we are able to do a, a quick non-meeting so that we can, um, have a discussion regarding salary.
So we could have, we could have the meeting with him and then, uh, vote on the salary at the same time?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yes, that's.
Oh, sorry, so, oh, one more thing, Jessica, and we can do this all remotely to make it very convenient for everyone if it is an eight o'clock meeting or something like that.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Jessica, sorry.
Yeah, oh, no, no. Yeah, I think that's, I, it just sounds like it would give peace of mind, um, to some of the members and then also allow some of the new members, typically new members, um, an opportunity to also, um, be involved in the process without delaying things.
But can the new members really be involved because they're not officially seated?
Yeah, no, they.
And they also, and they attend?
Well, they can, of course. They should be able to attend and attend as a public member, which is nice, too, because then they'll be able to, you know, see them, but just they want to be there and.
Deciding, but, yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Jessica, I, I agree because there were a few, I wasn't here when you interviewed me here, so I hadn't met Chip, so I know, which you just said she was, so it would be helpful.
Sure.
So just a question, do you have to report that?
Yes, because there's going to be a vote.
We would need at least six members for that.
So as long as there's six members available, I could tell you I have something every night this week. So.
Un, unfortunately, yeah, I, I, you know, even though I'm pushing for this, I am, I have a board meeting, meeting on Thursday, so I am busy this week, too. But when Scott's set up until Thanksgiving, we still have Monday, Tuesday, and, um, you know, Wednesday of next week as well.
I, I don't think I'll be available next Wednesday.
Okay, well, Monday or Tuesday?
Can, can I ask whether the board members would entertain like a meeting on Friday night or even a weekend?
Yes.
Yes, I, I think for those, I think Sue, um, and Jessica and Lori, Mary, for those that are, are part of the board, if the s, the six people are there six, right? Okay, Eric? If the six people who are most, it's going to, you need to know who you're working with. I think if the six of you can make a commitment with Scott, it's more important than the rest of us who might not be there. I don't want it to be held up, but I want to guarantee that you have that opportunity as long as six people can commit to that and Scott doesn't give up a night to try to organize this, you know?
Yeah, a Fri, a Friday or weekend, um, that definitely works, too. It's not going to take any longer than an hour max, in my opinion.
I would agree. I would agree. I think, because you really just, you really want to have this conversation with him. And, you know, I think you have some pretty clear-cut questions. I think you'll get answers to those pretty quickly. And then, you know, you'll get a sense, some of you will remember maybe having interviewed him already and, you know, you'll get a sense of, of who he is and what he's all about, so.
Just his picture kind of reminded me. Sue, did you see his picture? Just kind of, if you look at his picture, I kind of remember him up at the front. He was a dynamic individual, I recall. But definitely he wasn't our first choice, so I think it's a good reason for you, you know, to consider just meeting with him again. Thank you.
If we can preserve the timeline, I think that.
Yes.
That's the number.
And I would back with the six people, should be the six people who are going forward with the process.
The only thing I would ask is if we're, you know, at that crunch time and the only people that are available are some of those who'd be definitely leaving, I would ask that just maybe six people.
Right. I think the point is to have it, what I'm saying, like, if the commitment is for those people who are going to work with him to be there, then that should be the commitment. Certainly, if we're available, we would pop in to support the meeting, but that, that's not the purpose, you know.
And if you need more, I'm definitely.
Understood.
Any other questions?
Kathleen, Joe, maybe I just don't understand, and it'll be obvious to the new members as well. But what is, when I say the alternative, the alternative, it sounds like, is to go out and get a new firm. What is the timing of doing that? And again, Scott's kind of hit some of the wickets about the downfall of it. But realistically, what are we looking at timing if the board can't agree that this gentleman, Chip, is the right person to carry forward with the search? What's the timing going to look like? Is we talking February, March?
Yeah, well, just to walk through that, Joe, it's a great question. Because, you know, you, first of all, the board would have to make a motion. So that wouldn't happen tonight, I assume. So we're probably talking about, if the board tells me sometime between now and, let's say, beginning of December, we would have to post a request for proposals. Typically, you post it for at least a month or so. You've got the holiday season in there, so that's going to push you into January before you even get the proposals. Then you're going to be interviewing, so you have to set up interviews in January to interview the firms that do submit proposals. So you're likely looking at sometime in mid to late January before you have made that decision. And now you're going to be talking about their process and whether they're willing to pick up where Joe left off or start the whole process new because they may do something a little different. So you may not actually be posting the position until, I'm going to say probably sometime in March. Remember, February is full of budget meetings. And so there's not a lot of time to do much more than just focus on the budget. So you're probably posting the position in March, interviewing in April. If you appoint somebody in April or May, you know, you're not, you wouldn't have somebody there to start it until like first. You'd be looking at probably September 1st before somebody can start. So it does push off the process by a few months.
And it also, like you said, I believe you said it, there's other firms out there now searching for superintendents who's opening. So that helps, that doesn't hurt, I mean, that doesn't help the board to try to get the, you know, the best candidates either. I mean, the pool would probably be tapped down a little bit. So I think that's important. And you mentioned the budget process too, which is very dynamic. So is there, I know Sue has some good questions there, but is there a, and I don't know what this meeting you were talking about, did Chip interview before? Did he come in and take up, pick up for Joe at some meeting?
No, Joe, we're referring back to 2020 when the board interviewed the three candidates for the three search committees. You interviewed Joe, Chip, and there was another candidate that you interviewed.
Okay, I don't, I wasn't part of that, so I don't, okay, no, that makes sense. Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
Sue or Laurie, do you remember who the third fellow?
I thought it was Cave.
Oh, I didn't think it was.
No.
Cave.
Another, oh.
No, that.
Was reent.
Again, I can describe him to you, but I can't remember his name.
Go ahead, Laurie, finish and then Rob would like to ask a question.
Well, right.
Yeah, absolutely. I just, I, thank you, Joe, for saying what you said because you kind of helped me to articulate the, I completely understand it was a long time ago that we had these interviews and we want to ask these questions. And I think it's, everything that was stated was great to get people on board. And I just don't under, I just don't see the alternative. I think we kind of shoot ourselves in the foot if we do not accept Joe's recommended replacement for Chip, who we did have that opportunity to interview, who has not only the letter that indicates that they have designated a team for the search, but they have a brochure with a little bit of a background on who that search team is and the other successful searches that they've had. I think sometimes you have to trust in the process. And in this case, unfortunately, Joe is part of the process because he's no longer to be able to be with us. I find it much more concerning. I think those answers can be, those questions can be answered after we move forward with the process, get that salary with the meeting tomorrow night with Chip and move forward. Soon after we decide to do that, I think it can be detrimental if we take time to feel it out, see if we like it, and then if we determine not to, what that does to the timeline. I think that, I find that extremely concerning. And I think that is most concerning above everything else that's been mentioned.
Rob?
Do you think this state would give us a hard time for starting our third year within terms of the poll?
Um, no, I don't think so, yeah.
The issue would be finding an interim and then having, again, I think, a segue from Scott to an interim with a delay to another superintendent.
And then, in and out. Yeah.
It wouldn't be anybody who could at that time move the district forward. It would be somebody who would be supporting what is going on. I think it's, it would be more of a maintenance kind of position just to support the board and looking for a superintendent that they would like to have in place for the rent community.
I can always speak for myself. I remember interviewing them. It wasn't that I didn't like Chip, I just liked Joe better. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, Chip would have been my second choice. So in my opinion, if you remove Joe from the equation, odds are it's going to be Chip and two other guys. And I, I know personally I would choose Chip. So if that's who Joe is recommending, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, if you trust him enough to teach his classes, I think you probably trust him enough to finish a search, but.
Agreed. Yes, do.
If it's any help, just from my own personal interactions with Chip, I know both Joe and Chip very well and have worked both with them. With Chip, I was years ago, there were about 10 of us as high school principals who got together quarterly. We hired a facilitator. We'd meet at Aces in North Haven for professional development. Chip was one of those individuals. I got to know him pretty well there. And I certainly speak for his character. The fact that he was part of a small group that went out of our ways to hire somebody to do constant professional development with us. I was actually with Chip on the morning of the Newtown tragedy. He was principal of Newtown High School. We were together in North Haven that morning and he got the call that something was happening and had to go back. And since then, he became one of the key school safety representatives in the state. Joe actually played that same role, and so they both had some similarities there. I went on to work with Chip. He was an assistant chair for me at one of my BS businesses that I chair. So I got to work with him very closely and found his health to be invaluable. So, you know, on a personal level, I can speak very highly of him. And my experiences with him have not been on a friend basis, but more of a professional basis. And he's always done a great job.
I think it's very sad to hear about Dr. Laurie and certainly that has left us in a predicament that we would have never guessed we would have been in at this point. First, for most, we want to wish Dr. Laurie the best and, you know, wish him a speedy recovery and good health. And for us, as outgoing or incoming board members, certainly the number one goal would be to put the superintendent who is effective and has good leadership in place, regardless of the agency he uses. I think the Board of Education will have a tough decision and hopefully have good candidates, no matter who is in charge of the search. Candidates are going to apply to RAM regardless because RAM's a good place to work, because it's a great school system and that is known in Connecticut and certainly outside of Connecticut. And I think people are going to be drawn here no matter what. It's just whether, who you want guiding the ship. But I think the Board of Education should do that guiding regardless of who is at the forefront.
Kathleen, Joe, again, could you render an opinion on it? I mean, I looked at your leadership business. And it's okay if you want to say, you know, you don't want to. But I think you, as the board chair, should have a say. And, you know, I'd love to hear your opinion on what you think is the best course of action. Because I'm clearly, even though I'm outgoing, my opinion, from what I've heard so far, is to, is to not go with, not delay this search. And I just think that that's going to be detrimental to a lot of different reasons. But I do understand Sue's concerns, but I do think, you know.
Look, let me just add one more thing. If we say yes tonight, I don't, I feel like if we wait, have an hour meeting in the future, we, you know, in the next days, you know, Monday or Tuesday, Friday, we have more negotiation. So let's just say he's going to, he comes back and says, no, you're going to be working with multiple teams. Well, we could say, well, we really would like to just work with one team. And I feel we have more negotiating power that way before we sign on the dotted line. It's just like anything with negotiation. So that's just, I'm just throwing that out there as well. But if we say yes tonight, doesn't matter what he says, we signed, we voted, and he's in.
Sue, I just want to say, from the literature that's in the packet, it looks like the team consists of him and three people, of which their CDs are included in the packet of information. I totally hear what you're saying. I totally hear what you're saying. And I think if we had more time, I would, I love, I love that idea of really, you know, let's go back, let's revisit, it's been a while. I guess because I fall into the same opinion as Rob, Chip was my second choice. So when you take Joe out of the equation, so for me, it might be, it's a little bit different because I'm coming from that perspective. But again, I think, I don't think we're slepping it with, you know, a run-of-the-mill group, a large group. It looks like there's him plus three other people. It's not like we're going to be sifted through 15 different individuals, you know. It's not like, I'm going to use an analogy here, it's not like going with the OBGYN with a group of 12 different doctors and they got filtering you around because you never knew who was going to be in the delivery room. I don't think we're going to have that similar experience with that large of a team according to the documents that are in this, that are in this email that was sent over. Just saying, just as an FYI, to just draw your attention to that.
Laurie, I love your metaphor.
Glad you can appreciate it.
Absolutely. And let's just leave it there. So I was asked my opinion, Joe, and my opinion is to move forward with Chip. I have high regard for Dr. Laurie. I work for him. I know he would not put somebody in place that he did not trust nor that he thought would do a job that would mirror what his expectations were. I think if Scott and the board are comfortable with Chip, that we should move forward. I think any delay at this time, I don't, I don't support. I understand Sue's questions and to that degree, if we had more time, I would totally want to get all of those questions answered. I'm wondering if there's just a way to ask in those questions for Sue without there being another meeting. I mean, we can ask questions to anybody we're hiring, if that's okay. You know, I think Sue does have some good questions. And I think the reason we picked Joe is for personalization. If we're just going to have one person from the team, and usually that's what it is, is they decide. And I know this might not be typical because we're catching them, we're bringing them in as opposed to had we started with them and said, this is the person that was going to be here. But if they could qualify that a little bit more, maybe it would resolve some of the questions. Other than that, that's my opinion.
Scott, do you have his phone number? Could you text him right now and ask him? Sue, is your specific question, is your specific question, Sue, that is Chip going to be our person? Is that your direct question?
So we can hear you.
I didn't, I didn't.
You didn't still.
I didn't hear that.
Yep, sorry. Who is taking the lead? And is the team, how many searches is this team handling at one time?
Is it possible?
Absolutely, absolutely. I can text him right now.
He might not be available right now.
I know, I know he's negotiating.
Right, I was going to say, he might not be up to answer right this second.
But I will text him right.
I appreciate the willingness to do this. But if the board, if this is what the board votes, I'll be voting a different way and let the vote, you know, majority rules. I understand the board concept here. So we can move forward if you all would like.
Well, I think we have an option to get some answers, so.
Sure, if we can get some answers, that's great. And maybe we, can we move on, you know, throughout the board meeting and then come back at the end and see if we can get the answers?
That's who you want to answer, but I think they're just, it's just the time.
Kathleen, the other question I have is, why, what, why can't we decide what the salary is tonight? Does that typically come from, does that typically come from the consultant?
Yeah, Joe, it's what you're going to want, what the consultant's going to bring to the table is comparisons with similar districts, looking at the administrative salaries within the district and, you know, kind of arriving at that sweet spot for what, because they know the lay of the land. And they know what people, you know, where they might be coming from and what would be acceptable and what might be too low, what might be outrageously high. So, you know, I definitely would want them to be steering that discussion with you guys. Because, you know, I just, I don't have that information in my pocket, whereas they have all of that.
It will be key, especially if we're going to be looking, or the Board of Education will be looking at sitting superintendents because they're going to be looking to either make us much or more moving to another district. So it's got to be a salary that is going to draw good candidates. This Board of Education is only one at the superintendent. Well, we are the board that the towns represent is a big deal when you're one superintendent. You have to go to Andover, Marlboro, and Hebron and then have connections not just with the elementary schools and the towns that are feeding in, but also with those communities, boards of finance. So the position for RAM, although it is just a middle and a high school, and I hate to use the word just, but the obligations outside of school for a sitting superintendent for RAM are huge and take up a lot of time outside of the school day as well. So the salary is important because you're asking somebody to give up a whole lot of time.
All right. Are we going to move forward and see if we can get answers?
Yeah, I would say maybe put this on hold and then we can come back to it and.
So move to financials? Okay, there, sorry. Okay, there, sorry.
So we had to go home and finish her homework, but she handed me this piece of paper and I looked at it. She said, "When it's coming, can you please extend my congratulations to the members whose terms are up? Can you thank them in my behalf and tell them that it was a pleasure, Sue?"
That's awesome.
Who, who said that? Who?
From Mr. Lou.
Okay.
Our student, yes?
Yep.
Yes, very nice, very polite, and it's lovely to be on the board with her. Must be something her parents, daughter, or family. Um, so financials, expenditure review report, enclosure ten point two A.
Okay, so my, my understanding is someone who may not have had their packets delivered yet. An oversight of my part was, the May, October expenditure report was not put into your packet. So the folks here have received a hard copy. I will make sure that the online version is updated with that. But as the packet would state, if you have one, it said that the net projected favorable position at the end of October thirty first, twenty twenty one is fourteen thousand six hundred forty one dollars. We're in the process of receiving invoices for magnet and Loeg, based on the October fifteenth enrollment data that the state collects. So once we receive those invoices, there's a process in place to ensure that the students really are R and those are then processed for payment. So by December, a board meeting will have a better understanding of if there's availability in any of the tuition lines that we can move around for whatever unknowns might be coming our way. The capital improvement fund, the RFP, this process was, yes, and a purchase order was issued for St. Mark's to do the, the work on the HPAZ replacement for the high school locker at End and Dino's. In the, St. Mark's is in the process of currently working with RZ designs to gain approval for materials that need to be purchased. The capital on occurring fund is awaiting the closeout of the DL two project. And the capital services department is able to work on their excess cost, which updated F H day, that process applied for the December first submission date, so we're ahead of schedule on that. Um, so hopefully, our first payment, I believe, comes at the February, March timeline then. So we will have better understanding of and how our revenue will fall based on that submission. Are there any questions that I can make on the board based on that?
Eva, do we know what our excess cost is going to be this year as a state? Given any numbers or anything? No. That's something for future Board of Education members to find out if it comes out, and the state is always delayed. And the other thing is, are the materials, are they delayed in any way?
Uh, no, so far so good. It's basically just a, a creative terminology that, that they're doing. But it's just basically making sure that everything that we ask for in the RFP matches up with what they're proposing. Like, you know, everything should be on point and shouldn't be in supply changes.
Any other questions besides mine?
Here we go. The next on the packet is the RAM middle and high school student activity report. Balances, they're total up to the bank balances, so it's looking well. The total available balance in all of the student activity account for both middle school and high school is two hundred and twenty six thousand six hundred and fifty five dollars. Are there any questions that the board can add on that?
I think it, I think, Eva, it's important, if there's, I think there's a few new members on here, so you might just want to throw out a little bit of what's, what the student activity account entails.
So student activity accounts are for the students of the class to have. So any funds that are in student activity account can only be used for the benefit of the student directly. So students will fundraise for these funds, so classes, like their class of twenty two, twenty three, they'll, the homecoming is a fundraising for the senior class so that they can do their senior activities. Many times when graduating class leaves, they'll take the money and utilize it for their reunions later on. There are, historically here, the classes will donate back to the school, which has been lovely. One of the projects that we're hoping to get passed is a signage that many of the classes have, I'm sorry, a digital. For the school that will hopefully pass to the towns planning and zoning, so that, because many of the classes, previous classes have donated to that asset. There are numerous items throughout the building that have been donated by classes, a lot of families displaying cases and, and those types of things. You have C plus that they, middle school and high school will be seeing. That's where they get their money, come and give them the steam and the chat funds. Those are the types of, I think, that they'll find in a student activity.
I think just to take off on that just a little bit, one of the testimony to, and speaks volumes about our student body is our senior graduating class of two thousand twenty one actually donated significant funds to the juniors, sophores, and freshmen, because during the pandemic, they weren't able to do any fundraising. So although the seniors had a sizable amount in their student activity fund, the other classes did not due to the lack of fundraising. So the last year's exiting seniors really did a, a kind gesture and provided a significant amount of their ex, their remaining funds to the other classes so that they would be able to get, as they, to their senior years and things like proms and everything, so it had the cost a lot of.
Are there any questions on the student activity? Okay, so here we go, and the final item that I'm speaking about is the food service and food sales and expenditure report. So as I reported last month, it seems trending better, more of the students are eating. Staff members are also partaking in meals. So we actually ended with a net income from last month of one thousand three hundred eighty two dollars and forty two cents. It helps reduce the loss that we're seeing, but it, it still is trending in the correct way. We're going after that, we have a hit coming, and I foresee that that should keep us, that trend should keep us moving forward. So are there any questions against that?
Eva, can I get that to student activity? I'm sorry, just wondering if, when Dr. Bruce is here. What's it looking like for the eighth ready to take their trip this year?
Um, there is no D C trip this year, but there is, the teachers are looking at providing at least a one-day trip to something like Holiday Hills or something fun, create a, have sort of a memory. The issue we're running into is same as usual, but same as that.
And with, like, the Washington trip being overnight, we're really purposely avoiding many overnight trips. Because you plan them and then if, 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 if travel becomes impossible, you know, each, well, we haven't because we haven't done a trip. But we, for the pandemic, when things started to get canceled, we ran into significant challenges with all the money that didn't pay to the companies and.
I remember that.
Yeah, it's a.
That was a good connection.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid those issues moving forward.
I'm just, I, the only reason I was asking because I noticed there was money in activity for D C trip or D N C trip, so yeah, so I didn't know.
And that money typically be used if the trip wasn't run to fund other field trips to subsidize.
Yep. Sorry, I'm. Um, and also with the fruits and vegetables, um, just if there's some other things that students can get if there's fruits and vegetables. I'm sure they'll want to eat up the broccoli.
Oh, right.
So we can have that. Not that, that's very good.
Um, it's, it's not that we're not getting the fruits and vegetables. The G O D S, the Department of Defense provides us with the models of fresh fruit and vegetables. The people that the state of Connecticut has contracted with, in its part for provision company, is there? Because of their staff shortages, can only supply each of the districts on a monthly basis. So that in turn makes the district or goods and contract with a different vendor to try to get the fresh fruit and vegetables. So we're not getting that for this particular week, but we can do, 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 do more. But yes, that fact has added expense to the district unfortunately from that question. But yeah, everybody is supposed to get their fruits and vegetables. So we not be the fruit vegetable that we may have.
Yeah, the man you were, for that week, but, um, so there is some adjustments that happen on a daily basis. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, we have the committee reports, facilities. Joe, Rob, or Mike, do you want to report out following our last meeting?
Uh, sure. The last meeting we had, which was? November tenth?
Yep.
Tenth. We talked about, we had Chris Clark on, on the call with us and basically talked about the issues we had with the high school baseball field. And so the discussion was, Mr. Clark was entertaining with some other people about bringing in some additional sources of expertise, trying to get some more ideas and remedies of the drainage on that field. And then we talked about the comp field situation. It was likely discussion on that, but nothing was really of substance. I don't think we made, we, we decided on anything on that, waiting for the new board members to come in. But basically, the consensus on, on the vote in the field was, what do we do next? So we're trying to figure out, well, the discussion was, what do the towns want? What does the taxpayers want? They didn't seem to, you know, I, I personally don't think they understood the, the issues. But again, that's, that's where we're at, we're, we're kind of in limbo. There's, Rob's leaving, I'm leaving. Chris Clark was somebody I retired, Scott's leaving. Uh, I think the board isn't, you know, the, the, Mike is probably going to be carrying the torch, Mike Morse. But I think the board needs to, besides the superintendent search and a budget that's coming up, you got to figure out where, what, what, what the processes of how we're going to fix these fields, if in fact the community wants to do that. So I, I, I think that was pretty much it, Scott. Rob, if you had anything else you wanted to add, if I missed something, but it wasn't, I think those are our discussion points.
I'd like to thank the facilities subcommittee. You guys did a lot of work for these for the four years that I've been here. And I want to thank the Board of Education for putting mature field referendum up for vote. Unfortunately, it didn't go through. Personally, for me, it's a disappointment, and I know it is for other members of the board, but something still needs to be done, and that would be a big challenge for the next facilities subcommittee.
Hi, I'm Erika, I'm the person who always says I'm not the athlete on this. But I did feel for people who had spent so much of their time in labor getting that part on them and was sorry that it didn't pass. But I think there was some miscommunication, if you might say that. I, at least at a meeting I was in in Marlboro in the election, people were thinking it was three point five for each town, or whatever the referendum vote was. I don't think that was the case. I, that's, that's a real miscommunication, because that's a community, it's not a mine.
I know, Scott, but I have a pamphlet that addressed all of that. I know we had several conversations within the Board of Education before we put it to vote a referendum about what we did.
I know we communicated and was saying it didn't, that, that was a serious miscommunication. You know, their misunderstanding of this, because that was a rumor out there.
That's something definitely, it's a shame, especially being at a turf field this past weekend with the JV football team and seeing such a nice field. I know that our students were playing on a turf field, a well-groomed field at some other school, but don't have it here. It's a shame.
Kathleen, again, I just to say thank you to you and Rob and, and all the board for pushing that through, as Jean mentioned. But you had an integral part in doing, you know, as a sports booster member, not a Board of Education member. You and Rob really got, you know, the, the people to try and vote for this. So you, you guys really did a great job, so I just to be commended on your efforts, so thank you.
It's a team effort, Joe. Finance and audit, compliance and insurance. Uh, we don't have a meeting till November eighteenth. You know, we'll be combined facilities and audit, and it's a lot.
Although I think we're going to have to cancel that meeting because we have another meeting to express some of that. So we have the, there's a, yeah, another meeting to have, so. So we'll have to reschedule that.
Okay.
And I think right now, we're, we're still, I don't think we're, we're far enough in the budget to really start to have those conversations.
Great. Negotiations we didn't meet, don't have any right now, we finished, we finished. Are there any upcoming?
No, there's no more negotiations until next year when the administrators.
Policy was canceled, we got meeting, we're supposed to be open till the nineteenth.
Right now, we have no policies that are scheduled for an update, so we're, we don't have, the administration doesn't have any great word. We just did product policy.
I have a question. Uh, the writing policy, has Kate gone through to look at all of our policies to see if they're on track? If they're updated in the timely fashion or if anything needs to be, not that the administration needs to, but have we looked at all of them? We've got so many, um, it's been a long, long time.
We worked, well, we worked for shipping and goodwin for us, too. And we had a, I haven't worked with Kate on that, though.
Well, I don't think you do. I use, I just make a page, I'm working with Board of Education policies. And then Eastcon came, but Judy's not here. I don't know if she shared anything with you.
No, she did not, no.
Did Judy share anything with any of the other board members regarding either Eastcon or Kate? So that's it?
I have not heard back from Chip. I'm assuming that means that he's deep in negotiations if we speak, and so we can continue on. We have a few more, I have the public comment, and then we have the other informational items. Do that, and we'll have a executive session.
Public comment, I hate for Andover, Marlboro, Community Engagement and Attendance. Go ahead.
Okay.
It's a better feeling.
He, Andover, Marlboro, Community Engagement and Attendance, supportive Ed public meetings is welcome. Public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, we're discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in discussion of the comments presented. Are there any public comments that anyone would like to add?
I have a public comment I would like to make.
Sure.
Mary Rose Mead from Hebron, Connecticut, and I would just like to thank all of the members of the Board of Education who will be leaving their tenure on the board and thank them for their support of education in our town and all that they've done and all the incredible amounts of time. and all that they've done and all the incredible amounts of time that they've put into that. It is most appreciated by parents and staff, and we are just really grateful for the time that you've put in. And thank you also to all of those who will stay on and serve in the future as well. We really do appreciate the time. We know how much time it takes, and we're really grateful for your dedication. And that is my comment.
Thank you, Rose. Any other public comment?
Okay. Uh, information items, we have a calendar events for each of the middle and the high schools and the discipline report for the middle and high school. Any questions to come to some of those? Well.
You sell a prize? Mike, did you sell a prize?
Couple hundred. Couple hundred.
Right.
Um, so I, I have not heard back from Chip. So I, I still need guidance on this issue. I guess the, it sounds like if I'm understanding you correct, it's either asking me to go back and have a Friday scheduled meeting with Chip on your front day, even the next week and a half or so, unless someone wants to make a motion otherwise.
So.
I have another suggestion.
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, sorry, Kathleen. So, you know, why don't we ask, I, I would like to, I'd like to make the motion that we, we take this vote tonight. But before we, I, I think that we could, we could enter, we could make the motion to ask the question and get the answer, you know, or maybe we did, we dictate to Chip and say, look, we want you as our point guy, and if that can't be a guarantee, then, then it needs to come back to the board or something, something along that effect. That way, we kind of get to kick the, the question answered immediately, uh, but we still keep the ball moving. Does that make sense?
So motion to move forward with the caveat that the questions regarding who's going to particularly do it from C P S and how many, um?
I would just make the question that Chip be our guy, that he's, if that suits concern and other members' concern. You know, I, I just think we can't afford to lose the time. We're at, we're at a crossroads, and I think that if Joe, I would agree with everything you said. And if, you know, Joe Girardi has been our guy, he's, he's put his name on, you know, the label on this guy, and he's, he's vetted him and trusts him. I think that's good enough for me because I think the alternative is not good. So that's my, my, my prognosis on it. But I, I think that if, not to murky the waters, but I think if we just say that, Joe, you need to be our guy, then I think that answers Sue's question, maybe. But if anybody else has a question, uh, I, that's my thought process. So I, maybe I didn't make that very clear, but, uh, I think it's critical that we make a decision tonight.
So what, what's the motion, Joe? I, I, I can respect your suggestion. Can you make the motion so we can hear it?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we move forward with Chip. I don't know his last name, I'm sorry.
Du May.
He's what? What was it, Scott?
Du May.
Du May is, uh, uh, for superintendent search with the, that's, with the, understanding that Chip is going to be the lead person for the Ram Board of Education. And no, uh, he'll be the lead.
Second.
Any discussion?
And you gotta come back.
But doesn't that disrupt the timeline over?
The timeline wasn't disrupted for having an hour meeting in the next week and a half. The timeline still remains the same, according to Scott.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm confused by the motion. Maybe someone can clarify this. We're making a motion to say he has to be the lead.
I think the board would like one particular person to defer to. Is that, is that what you're thinking, Sue? That you want, that that was one of the selling points to Joe is that it wasn't a huge thing. We knew to go back to where he's.
A U B G Y N metaphor. He didn't buy into it.
And you know, it might get that day.
It was, it was Joe. You have one, one person you're working with, it was Joe. We all enjoyed that, um, working with one person. You don't even know if Joe had people working with him or not. We don't, we didn't even care. He was just our main contact. He was the face.
And how do you think Chip will handle? Well, I guess I need some, just some clarification. So I, I'm assuming what, am I correct in, in my understanding that you want Chip to be the conduit to work with the Board of Education? It doesn't mean that the other folks in the team aren't doing some of the work. But when it comes down to meeting with the Ram Board, having discussions with the Ram Board, Chip is the person that is the, the contact, the face that you guys see and the person that you talk to.
That is my, that is my intent. That's exactly what I'm saying. That's my intent.
So he may have people who do some of the legwork, but he is essentially the person that, and so I want to make sure that I, I, it's, it's clear for you because you will still be here. I think it's important for you to.
Yes, that, that's Joe's, Joe's intention is definitely what I, I want. I want one person to be the face to us and to be working directly with us.
Could you have a question regarding the motion? Are you okay?
No, just a spelling. Is it Du May?
Du, D U M A I S.
So I have moved forward with Chip Du May for the superintendent search with the understanding he will be a person for the Ram Board of Education.
Is that right, Sue? Is that what you're agreeing to? The motion?
Yes, I seconded, I seconded that motion that Joe.
I would ask, I just was clarified because she reread it.
Yep.
Uh, any other discussion? Call a vote? Mary? Jean? Rob?
I'm gonna abstain.
Eric? Joe?
Yes.
Mike? Is he gone? Sue?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lori?
Abstain.
I'm gonna abstain too. Just I'm not gonna be here. Yes.
So, um, Kathleen, can you just read the yeses and the nos and the abstains?
Yes, I can. I have one, two, three, four, five yeses. And I have one, two, three, four abstentions. Judy and Mike are not present.
So that carries the vote.
I have five.
Okay, I will, I, I will reach out to, obviously I have her, but obviously she's busy. So more than likely, um, it'll be tomorrow morning. And then I'll, I'll communicate with everyone as soon as I hear back from them and have a chance to have that discussion. Yes, I'll tell everyone that.
So just so I understand, we needed at least six people to vote. We have, um, we have nine, including four abstentions. So five yeses.
Here, correct.
Okay. So I think at this time, we're going to close our regular meeting and head to executive session.
So there, this is separate link for executive session, right? Then we'll back into the regular meeting after that. So I'll ask everyone to go into executive session. And I'll, then I can fill you in on.
Just need a motion.
Okay, yeah.
A motion to go in executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive sessions.
And if we're gonna invite just your lesson.
Invite me into.
Can't think of my, yes. Welcome back to our regular meeting, uh, this cycle of action as a result of our executive session.
So I will make a motion to allow Linda Thurber Lund to delay her retirement another year without negatively impacting her retirement benefit.
I'm a second. I'm gonna Jean second it today because it's her last second. I'll call a vote. Any discussion? Here we have. Uh, Mary? Jean? Rob?
Yes.
Eric? Joe?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, please thank Linda for her service and, uh, let her know that we support her and certainly the quality of work that she's doing, uh, should be recognized.
I'm going to adjourn.
That's Rob's last motion. Good night, everybody.